Good evening, and welcome to the Town Board meeting. It is June 9th, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a beautiful June night after a couple of days of rain and everything's growing. You can almost hear the grass grow. Welcome. As we do on the business meeting of every month, read the statement of the supervisor for the month. This one is for the month ending April 30th. To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook pursuant to Section 119 of the town law, I hereby tend to the following detailed statement of the monies received and dispersed by the supervisor during the month. The grand totals are: the opening balance being $5,499,535; receipts were $358,238; we disbursed $1,073,307, leaving a balance of $4,764,465. You will see some detail on our accounts on page 2. The transfers going on having to do with the wiring of the money for the settlement of the funds that we disbursed, voted to disburse last time. Transfer tax, you'll note that that is, that does not show yet the deduction for the vote that we had last two weeks ago. I don't, yes, there are some, there are some budget adjustments. In the A fund, there's a total increase in revenue of $65,506, and an offset to that exact same amount. And you'll see most of it applies to this shared services grant that was received from Dutchess County for shared services highway administration. In the general B fund, there are increase in appropriations of $1,500, a receipt from the NYSERTA Green incentive grant, and I believe there's another. In the waterworks operation and maintenance fund, there is a total increase in appropriations of $40,000, and I believe Hank discussed that with us last time. And that, I think, is a total of budget adjustments. Anne has included at the very last part of this report, the actual budget expenses and encumbrances showing the percent left at this time at the end of May 2015 in the very far left column for the various accounts and budget items. And that's helpful when you have time to look at it, it's helpful to see where we are and what we have expended as a percent of budget to this date. So, I would say that this is above, but the above is a true and correct accounting of the balances shown in the books of the Town of Red Hook at the close of business on April 30th. Is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further, any discussion, questions, conversation? All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you. Okay. Anne has also included for your review, any balances that are due to the town, outstanding receivables, and there is just one, and you can see that in front of you on the attachment. And I believe that's all we have to report in that regard. The clerk's report, Sue, you have one, I think?
I do.
Thank you.
Town clerk monthly report, May 1st through May 31st. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, $1,064,511. Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for the spade and neuter program, $94. Amount remitted to New York Department of Health for marriage licenses, $45. An amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $410.04, for a total state, county, and local revenue of $2,194.75. Pursuant to Section 27, Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCantown, clerk of Town of Red Hook, during the period stated above with my office. And that's it.
Thank you, Sue. Are there any announcements, Sue? Maybe I'd start with you. Do you have any announcements tonight?
Not that I can think of, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Jim, have you any announcements?
Hi, good night.
Brenda, how about you?
Just as, as we speak, the senior services committee is at the firehouse collecting food for the Give a Child a Summer Meal program, so thanks to them.
Thank you.
And go with it, well, it's too late for the time of this broadcast.
Thank you. Karen?
No.
No?
Okay. There was an announcement stuck under my door, and I thought I was gonna get to it at the end of the meeting, but this would be a good time if I can dig it out. It was, well, maybe I won't, because... It's better not to mention things if you don't have it in your hand, you know what I mean?
Too late now.
It's too late now. Here it is. And it happens to be a Red Hook Police Department event celebrating our own hometown hero, Sergeant Patrick Hildenbrand. And it's an invitation to the Hudson Valley Renegades who are hosting the Lowell Spinners on Monday, June 22nd, at 6:35. And there is a sign up sheet at the Village Hall. The Village has a bus going on Monday to the Renegades game, and you could sign up there, anyone who would like to attend. They should do it as soon as possible, the bus only holds 55, so you've gotta hurry. And it's a sign up, first come, first served. Lara Hart is the person to see. The bus is 10 bucks a person. And there are post-game fireworks, and I think it's absolutely wonderful that they are celebrating Patrick Hildenbrand, who, as we know, is our hometown hero. So, there's a package group, too, that for $14, you get a Renegades ticket and a Gades group gift, and for $19, you get a ticket, a hot dog and a soda, and a Gades group gift. So, it doesn't get any better than that, and fireworks at the end, so everybody should, who's interested in baseball and celebrating Patrick. Celebrate Patrick anyway, even if you don't go to the game, we all do. That's it for me, I think. We can move into public comment, is there any?
Yes. Townsman, Clerk, or, I don't remember the board, I would ask to stand in for Rosemary's agenda tonight, in reference to St. Margaret's.
Yes.
And to save our town committee, I may approach, I'll give each.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mike.
Unfortunately, Rosemary cannot be here tonight, she injured her leg, and I'm gonna stand in for her. In reference to St. Margaret's, which I'm a member of, I would like to read the following. The Red Hook Town Board would be very pleased to have an art group exhibit their works at St. Margaret's home. As you are aware, last year, our committee hosted a Boden Martin Art Group exhibit in several rooms at St. Margaret's. However, we would like to have the dates, the exhibits will be on display. We are planning a reception there this summer in celebration of the life of all frameworks. We are also planning a fundraiser in early fall. We don't want any confusion on the dates. We would also like the Town Board to be aware of the facts that the following Red Hook residents would like to become members of the St. Margaret's Committee. Jamie Doug Diamond, Sam Hawkins, and Michael Castillo. You will be receiving letters of interest within the near future. You've noticed that a tree was cut down at St. Margaret's recently. Myself has offered to have this construction, and my guys do whatever work has to be done to assist John Kuhn in his labor reserve in landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, that's a very nice offer.
And to save our town committee, we would once again like to express our disappointment with the sidewalk plan for the eastern side of River County. We feel those sidewalks are a waste of money for the taxpayers, a safety risk for seniors and students, and most importantly, several residents have already been injured or died because of the false sense of security that the sidewalks on the western side of Route 9 in this same quarter has created. Ninety percent of the business and landowners and pro-sidewalk quarter do not want these sidewalks. Please refer to our previous petition. If any of the board members lived in this quarter, they would see how few people actually walk on this quarter. During the winter months, if you see two people a day walk on the western sidewalk, that's a lot. We ask you once again to consider, to reconsider this eastern sidewalk. The proposed sidewalk is seriously unsafe, unnecessary, and unwanted. Haven't you seen how unsafe this quarter is? Speeding trucks, angry drivers peeling added next to road, old farm road businesses in general. Would take another fatality to see the sidewalk is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
And, if you don't mind, just my own personal opinion. I don't see anything wrong with the sidewalks, but I believe we're putting the cart in front of the horse. If we considered putting a stoplight in with crosswalks, old farm road, firehouse lane, it would slow the traffic down significantly. People could safely cross through, which is gonna be an issue with the movie theater, the laundromat, Dunkin' Donuts. If the slights were put in, it would slow the traffic down tremendously. It would give people wishing to cross a fair opportunity to cross the street safely. That's just my personal opinion, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Then we can move straight into the agenda, and the first thing on the agenda is the Route 9 pedestrian improvements, having received the nod for the Transportation Alternative Program Grant, which several people, particularly Brenda Cagle, has worked very, very hard to secure. She will lead the conversation in this. We have a number of items in our board packets that relate to it.
Yes, as we mentioned before, we're now at the point where we are to, where the board is to sign the state local agreement, and we have a resolution to sign tonight that actually gives our supervisor the authority to do so for this first round, and, Mike, we did hear your comments, and we do think that we've considered the safety of the pedestrians there. There will be two crosswalks installed as part of this grant, and it certainly was a factor in our planning of the sidewalk. So, for tonight, we were asked to sign a resolution that appropriates $215,000 for the first three phases of the grant, that being the preliminary engineering and the right-of-way incidental, and what did they term the other one? Well, the preliminary engineering phase actually consists of doing the scope of service, doing the preliminary design and a detailed design, and then also the right-of-way incidental. So, of the $215,000, which we must appropriate upfront, the town's responsibility is $43,200 of that, and so that will get us through these phases, which by the end of the year should include all of the design as well as any right-of-way acquisition that we, we may need to do. Yeah, I guess we need to discuss about the appropriation of those monies, where that will come from. We've gotten a lot of information from our attorney, as well as from the Association of Towns, about what's appropriate for finding, using that money, and I guess the board needs to decide that before we can discuss the resolution. This week, or actually Thursday, I guess it was, thanks to Linda Stoddard and our purchasing agent Ted Cudsey, we got out the request for qualifications to 15 engineering firms. We worked off of a shortlist that's provided by county highway superintendents, and those firms have worked with federally, federally sponsored projects in the past, so we chose to use that method of procurement, working from that list. And their, the RFQs are due back on June 24th. So, are there any questions or discussion? I guess we have some information from, from Anne on our balances, our current balances.
Yes, I had Anne include in the packet in this piece, the amounts of money that are available to us in both the B fund and the DB fund, so if you will, I think it's attached to, let's see, it's attached to the resolution, I believe. And you'll see at the very bottom of the B fund page, where the B fund was at the end of 2014, with $471,790, and the DB fund at $525,338. That B fund is reflected in the gray shaded area, about three quarters the way down the page. Fund balance BO010909, fund balance unreserved. You'll see the amount that stands now at $496,578. The DB fund, which is the second page, has a fund balance unreserved of $520,366. So, these are town sidewalks, and I believe that I would recommend that we look to the DB fund for appropriating, in this case, because monies can be moved from the B fund into the DB fund, but not the other way around. And Jim, I'd like your reaction to that, if you would, you've been at this a long time with these funds.
No, but obviously that, that fund is relatively flush as well, and it, it only makes sense, because we can always transfer from the B, as you said, so into the DB, but it can't go the other way.
Right. Anyone have any concerns or questions about that action?
I would agree with his comment.
Right. So, I think, Brenda, that we all agree that the results section here, where the sum is 215, would be appropriated from the DB fund. So, would you read in its entirety the resolution, please?
Sure. Resolution authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance of 100% of the federal aid and state Marchesalee program aid eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore. Whereas, a project for the Red Hook, New York State, Route 9 pedestrian improvements, Town of Red Hook, Dutchess County, PIN number 8761.24, the project is eligible for funding under title 23 U.S. Code as amended that calls for the apportionment of the cost of such program to be borne at the rate of 80% federal funds and 20% non-federal funds. And whereas, the Town of Red Hook desires to advance the project by making a commitment of 100% of the non-federal share of the cost of preliminary engineering and right-of-way incidental work, provided that such preliminary work shall include the completion of the review of the project under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the town shall not be obligated to undertake acquisition or construction until completion of review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook does hereby authorize the Town of Red Hook to pay in the first instance 100% of the federal and non-federal share of the cost of preliminary engineering and right-of-way incidental work for the project or portions thereof. And it is further resolved that the sum of $215,000 is hereby appropriated from the DB fund and made available to cover the cost of participation in the above phase of the project. And it's further resolved that in the event the full federal and non-federal share cost of the project exceeds the amount appropriated above, the Town of Red Hook Board shall convene as soon as possible to appropriate said excess amount immediately upon the notification by the town supervisor thereof. It is further resolved that the supervisor of the Town of Red Hook be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, or reimbursement requests for federal aid and/or applicable Marchesalee aid on behalf of the Town of Red Hook with the New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the advancement or approval of the project and providing for the administration of the project and the municipalities first instance funding of project costs and permanent funding of the local share of federal aid and state aid eligible project costs, and all project costs within appropriations therefore that are not so eligible. And it is further resolved that in addition to the town supervisor, the deputy supervisor is also hereby authorized to execute any necessary agreements or certifications on behalf of the Town of Red Hook with New York State DOT in connection with the advancement or approval of the project identified in the state local agreement. And it is further resolved that in addition to the town supervisor and the deputy supervisor, the town bookkeeper is also hereby authorized to execute any necessary certifications on behalf of the Town of Red Hook in connection with the advancement or approval of the project. And it is further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation by attaching it to any necessary agreement in connection with the project. And it is further resolved, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you, Brenda. And so, I would like to move the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion?
Yeah, my only further discussion would be this, you know, this thing here from the state controller, item four, have we taken care of that item?
That says if we exempt the village from the...
Right, I mean it's...
We were, we were good with the DB, right, Chris?
For me?
We were good.
I think you had, and I don't know if this is in this packet, but I think you had concluded that there was a prior record of, that's the DB is the, is the outside, you know, outside village area, right?
Yes.
Which, what piece are you looking at, Jim? I just am trying to understand where you are.
This thing we got from Lori, the Association of Towns attorney, you know, with the state controller opinion as to...
Tim Moran, that one?
Funding for sidewalks, which one?
Oh, okay, okay.
I just wanna make sure what we're doing is appropriate, that's all.
You know, I think that, I think that might have, item four, I think, is just the maintenance of sidewalks.
Item four is the, in the list of the Highway 141.
Yeah.
The amount of money necessary to be levied and collected for removal of destruction caused by snow and for other miscellaneous purposes, and the comptroller's opinion was that that item four miscellaneous purposes could include sidewalks along state highways. That was the opinion that Lori had provided to Brenda earlier.
And that was just for maintenance? It wasn't with building, in respect to creating, right?
Anything further? Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to have a roll call regarding this vote. Bill?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Anne, I, yes. Thank you all. And Brenda, I know that you and the committee have done an incredible amount of work on this, and it leverages federal funds for the Town of Red Hook, that is a considerable investment, and we're very grateful to you, thank you. Now, just to, before I turn the page, this request for EBO system login password, and this has to be filed now that we have gone through this process, right?
I think it's filed after we, after we procure the consent.
Okay, all right, then I will make sure that that happens. Thank you.
And that's in the works, right?
That is in the works.
Yes.
They, they went out, the request for quotes went out on Friday or Thursday, may have even been Thursday.
They've been in hand since Monday, we believe.
Okay, thank you all very much. The second is a simple reiteration of something that happened, has happened in recent years. Ford College has a program called Center for Civic Engagement Scholars, wherein every spring, they bring in students from all over the country, and I'm, are all over the world, I'm sorry, here to the village of Red Hook. The first night that they arrive, they have a dinner for them at the Elmendorf, and I just wanted to tell you the, the depth of the program in terms of, of the geography represented by these students. This year, they are from Afghanistan, Algeria, Brazil, Bulgaria, China, Ecuador, Egypt, Georgia, Greece, India, Madagascar, Nepal, Nigeria, Sudan, Thailand, Tunisia, Uganda, and the Ukraine. And we have for them a proclamation in each of their honor for coming to Red Hook and, and visiting us that night, and for participating in this program. And so, if I may, each of them will receive one, and I know, having done this a couple of years in a row, how much these certificates mean to them, you know? It's not a big deal to us to do it, but they treasure these certificates, and it's, it's quite a moving thing to hand them to individuals. So, I'd just like to tell you a little bit about what we say. So, I say on behalf of the town, whereas I, Sue Crane, Town Supervisor of the Town of Red Hook, on auspicious occasions have the privilege of representing more than 11,000 citizens, and have been entrusted with the honor and pleasure of welcoming visitors to our community, and whereas our Town of Red Hook community has demonstrated pride in our unique 200-year history, and is comprised of multifaceted individuals who represent diverse cultures, education, ethnic backgrounds, races, religions, and personal lifestyles. Whereas, Red Hook's duly elected officials regularly come together each month to promote the safety, health, welfare, and do all such work that provides an environment that is desirable for our citizens, and sets an example for other municipalities by celebrating our values and desire for peace and prosperity. Whereas, within our community borders is located Ford College, an institution of higher learning, which has initiated the Center for Civic Engagement, a far-reaching academic exchange program for scholars from around the world to foster better understanding of the United States government and its foreign policies. Now therefore be it resolved that this day, June 15th, 2015, we welcome, and then it's devoted to that person's name, representing the country that they are from, to the Town of Red Hook community, and encourage you to promote communication, mutual understanding, and respect, and thereto I set my hand. And thereto, I set my hand, and it's signed. So I just wanted you to know how much these certificates are appreciated and how much they appreciate the Elmendorf. So I look forward to that. It's going to happen on June 15th, Monday, when they come to town. One of their favorite places I want you to know to visit is Holy Cow. That's one of the first things they do when they come into town, is they get a holy cow. Okay, so number three is St. Margaret's and the various issues of St. Margaret's. And we actually have several things going on there in addition to what the agenda says, which is tree assessment. There is a budget for some maintenance of St. Margaret's. It's very limited, and we are faced with damage to trees that are resulting from one lightning strike and a number of windstorms that have broken and loosened branches that make the property pretty dangerous for anyone even mowing the lawn. So I believe that you and John and Ted are talking with someone about negotiating tree downing, in the case of the one tree that is really dangerous. Another tree has been removed by way of Central Hudson, and we're grateful to them, thank you very much. And there are several other maintenance items that have to be taken care of on that property, but this is all a prelude to a conversation that I initiated with one of the members of, and maybe the president of, I'm not sure, she has a title, Carrie Fuhrer, who has been here talking to us about Red Hook Community Arts Network. And occurred to me to ask Carrie if she thought there might be a chance for a pop-up gallery there. We've seen them enter local stores in the village and refresh the store and use it as a gallery until the store is rented, and then they move on to another space. Currently, they have a storefront on North Broadway next to the CBS parking lot, but I felt that maybe they would enjoy having space to work in, paint together, and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to explore a conversation in that regard. And she wrote back with a number of questions about the offer. Number one, did we intend to charge? And are we insured? And is there parking? And practical questions. And that's about as far as it's gone. But I have polled each of you, and I think largely you're in favor of using the building rather than having it sit there. It's a question of the logistics of getting some of these maintenance things done first. So I wanted to bring that to our attention tonight to get reactions from each of you and see if you think we should pursue the conversation with Red Hook Community Arts Network. And if so, we can do so. Apparently, the Red Hook Town St. Margaret's Committee would be in favor of them using the building with the provisos of a schedule of events that they have already planned. So Jim, do you, since you're the liaison, do you want to chime in on the idea of having the building used by a local group?
I think it's a great idea, and as, you know, I spoke to the committee, and Mike gave us their letter and read that to us at the beginning of the meeting this evening. You know, as, you know, provided, you know, we make sure we have the insurance covered and we have the facility able to provide adequate space and bathrooms and so on and so forth for them.
Good. Okay. Brenda, any concerns, any questions, or questions that should be asked that haven't been asked?
I think it's a good idea. I'd definitely like to help Red Hook Can if they're wanting to be a vital community resource, and they're trying to do outreach and ask for help and ideas, so I would definitely like to help them.
Good. Harry?
Well, I would agree that helping Red Hook Can is a plus-plus for us. And having a use to the building to show signs of life there, I think, would also be helpful and perhaps a draw. Mike, I have concerns about the building, things that we really need to take care of first that can be done, but there's somewhat of a list that has to be taken care of before we let public people using it on a regular basis.
Okay, and Bill?
Well, yeah, I'd be in favor of using the building rather than not, but same time, I think our concern has to be the cost to the town, and then of course, the issue of liability. If there's something about the property that could give rise to issues involving liability to the town, how that would balance.
Okay, all good. We have, thank you Chris for finding the occupancy agreement that we had with Mill Street Loft back in, it was before my time, it was 2007, I believe. We had an agreement with Mill Street Loft, which used the building for a summer program, and I think it was a children's program. Anyway, there is an agreement that we can turn to if we decide to move forward with this, and if Red Hook Can is interested. We talked about the as-is condition and any of the limitations that the building presents. In that case, we charged a small fee to the Poughkeepsie-based group. And I think we have everything we need. All we need to do is answer the questions of the cost and the liability, and are they prepared to do it if it takes us a few weeks to come up with some of the revisions that need to be made on the property? So I'll move forward with your permission with that. Anyone object to that?
No.
Okay, okay. The next thing on the agenda is employee handbook. And we have talked this one around and around, and we have in front of you a bound copy that is pretty much what we intend to offer to employees. They will receive it, it will be in their keeping, they will sign that they have received it with all of the policies and procedures that the town has adopted for employment purposes. And I wanted to draw your attention to the fact that it has been revised to reflect the two, and now I don't even know where they are, the two revisions that we had at some point earlier, there are only two. And also to say that at the tail end of the book, Chris pointed out that these policies, human resources policy, manual policies that are, some of them one page and some of them several pages, that are referred to in the book, should be attached to the rear of this book so that the employee can read them and understand them.
Not actually part of the book?
They are not, they will be part of the book, they are not at this moment, but these are additions to what you've seen so far. And we...
What's that, so these...
It's a backend, loose pages, you'll see there's a Cobra, a Cobra policy is one, there is a workforce violence prevention policy is another, there is a leave of absence policy, and finally, an ethics policy. So what I would propose to do, I think, at this point is, inasmuch as we have not adopted three of these four, what I'd like you to consider is taking these policies with you, unless there's no need to. We need to adopt these policies before they become part of this, and the only one that's been adopted by the Town Board is ethics. So if you're prepared tonight to adopt them, we could do that.
Can I just ask a question, I'm a little confused, I think this, what is the source of this ethics policy? This isn't your town code, is it?
It's straight from the comptroller's office.
Okay, so that, so that, that's the article...
Yeah, it refers to that and...
The description, right, so there's another document that...
The fourth page of that document refers to Article 18 of the municipality's code.
One, two, three, four, yeah. There's a, right, there's another piece of paper that I, that I think you have posted, which is your actual town ethics policy, which isn't part of your town code, that should be inserted in here too, just as a matter of, to make sure informational, you've already approved it, it's already there, but it should be included in the book for information for the employees. And I think if, this is a document that came from the comptroller's office, that's fine, this is an explanatory document. I think there's actually, I'm not sure if it's just the same one, I think there's actually a copy, for what it's worth, that they issue, it's a one-page thing that they provide, that the comptroller's office provided, and that ought to be attached to, that's just a copy of statutory provisions. So you can just insert that as an informational item, you don't have to adopt it as a policy.
Do you know where to find that?
I do, I'll send it to you.
Okay. All right, so that's the ethics policy you're talking about? It's a New York State ethics policy?
It's not, it's Article 18, it's the statutory provision. So you have two things, the statutory provisions and your own town code ethics policy, which you've already approved, a couple of years ago, but you've already approved, so you don't have to take any further steps to it, it's just going to be attached to this as informational.
So it's entirely up to all of you if you would like to take this with you. We've talked about the materials, policies within the book that affect employment here. We have not discussed these, for example, the leave of absence policy, which is, which is not a small document. So I, it's eight pages. So I would think maybe that we could bring this back, give us a chance to read it, bring it back at the next meeting. I will then, by that time, have the Town of Red Hook's actual ethics policy and the New York State Article 18 to include with this human resources policy manual, policy and procedure that's here.
And these will be folded into the...
And these will be the very last pages of the manual because they are referred to in the manual, and the employee should be entitled to find them and look at them right there, right?
Right, I think that's the idea.
Yeah. So is that okay with everybody?
Right, now the Cobra policy, this is, this is just a standard government Cobra policy.
Yes, it is.
We passed a resolution a number of years ago that was actually over and above that, allowing employees that, one, weren't covered by our plan, but employees and/or should they retire, to participate in the plan at their own cost, but at our cost, which is considerably different than what's required under the federal Cobra law. And this, this just...
Is that in the manual though? Does that...
I didn't see it in the manual.
Are you talking about medical or pension?
Medical, not pension.
So I think that her medical, because medical plan changes every year, I think that her medical benefit summary is outside the document, because that does change every year from plan to plan. So her medical, dental, and vision coverage provision says summary of currently available coverage is available from the business office. So that is something that you're going to probably look at every year.
Right, but that's not the question I was bringing up, I was bringing up the Cobra question. Obviously, it's a pass-through, but we, a number of years ago passed a resolution that it's like a Cobra policy, that allow employees that aren't covered by the plan to participate.
To the extent that your plan would allow it, right?
Right. And we also passed a thing for should they retire and don't have a plan, they're not entitled to any benefits, but they're still allowed to participate in ours, and you know, at our cost, obviously, at their cost.
Jim, if I can refer you to retirement benefits on page 22, this is from Ann, her language, and maybe that this is what you're looking at, you're thinking about? Is that the policy that you're thinking of?
No, that's where we, the town, pick up a portion of the cost. It's ones that we don't pick up the cost.
Retirees, well, less retirees spouses may obtain coverage at their own expense through the town's insurance provider.
And that really just refers you to this insert we've just received.
Right, this, our Cobra insert is just a stock insert, it's not a resolution that we had passed a number of years ago.
So what you're suggesting, Jim, on page 22, is to insert there that at retirement, employees are entitled to avail themselves of the policy at their own expense?
At retirement, and also, you know, employees that aren't covered by the plan. We had, we did that a number of years ago because we had part-time employees that were interested, but, and so they participated in our quote group plan at their cost, and we allowed them, you know, should they, you know, retire or leave, that they could still participate in our plan. That was something, it was a number of years ago, we had done that.
Well, should that be in the book, or should that be in this additional document?
Either that or just, we should modify, this is a stock Cobra policy, modify our Cobra policy, yeah.
Yeah, we should probably modify this.
I guess before you do that, I think you need to make sure that it's consistent with your current plan that you're able to offer. And so I still wonder...
Well, we are able to offer it because it's simply an offer to the employee at their own cost.
Only if your plan allows you to do that. Your plan allows you to include them in your group benefits.
I've never seen that it did not.
Okay, but...
It may be up to the insurer.
So I don't know whether there's anybody, you know, this is...
Yeah, well, that's a point. These plans can get pretty rigid.
Right, so I think you might want to have a conversation with your current carrier about it. Can I suggest that and dig up the policy that perhaps that Jim is referring to, you drafted a resolution, Jim, do you have any idea of how long ago that was done?
Probably 20 years.
Oh.
Only he would remember that.
Well, Debbie might be able to help Ann put her hands on it.
She might, yeah.
So that would be a suggestion.
And I think one of the exposures here, if we were negotiating our insurance annually, that they could pull the rug out from under us sometime in the future.
Well, that's it, that's my concern.
One other suggestion I have is to pull out what your current coverage summary is that you provide, and that, maybe that already addresses this, so maybe take a look at that too. And I don't know where this Cobra policy came from, maybe she recently updated this, and maybe there's another one.
It looks like just a repeat of the stock federal Cobra policy.
She says it's from Nymer.
Ah, okay.
I'm sure Nymer didn't bring that up, but when the federal government came up with the Cobra bill, that's what they put out. Yeah, well, you know, we did that because at the time it made no difference, because you have a, our group plan is a small group plan, you know, which is, so our rate base is, they have a certain way of arriving at the rate base, but generally speaking, any group plan, if you have four members of the group, it benefits everyone.
Okay.
Don't we have people right now who are no longer part of the organization, who are still covered through this?
Yes.
That would be a result of what you're talking about.
I believe, I believe there is, there is at least one, if not more. And there is, I'm confident there is a spouse, or more.
Yeah. Right, and if you read this according to our book and it's Cobra, then the maximum they'd be, entitled to would be, what, three years or something like that?
Well, in some cases, 18 months.
Yes.
It may extend it to 29.
So I'm going to just suggest that you talk to your health benefits provider about that.
Fine.
And maybe dig up the old one. And the only thing that I would say is that there's a potential for, there's a reason for levying Cobra benefits because there are tax consequences to other types of benefits that are different from what's under Cobra, you know? You just want to understand what you're offering, that's all.
I don't see how there's different tax consequences.
We can talk about it later, other benefits.
Okay. First, we'll start with the health benefits provider and see what they have to say about what's allowed at... Okay. First, we'll start with the, the health benefits provider, and, and see what they have to say about what's allowed at this point. Okay, so we'll, we'll bring this back and hold this resolution for the next time we have this on the agenda, which may be the next business meeting. Okay, thank you very much. Shared services for extension of highway administrative grant. There are two, two grants here, so I have to be careful to point us in the right direction with the enclosures in your, in your packet. One is the grant that we received and were awarded for study of shared services of highway administration with the two villages. And that grant requires an extension, because we were able to identify ways to utilize the grant funding that we felt was the most efficient way to get at the best administrative techniques. And so I sent a letter today to the Dutchess County Planning and Development Office, where a woman named Kristy Bonomo is in charge of this grant, asking her for a contract extension, which is not unusual. Sometimes these are granted for long periods of time. We're asking for an extension for a few months through August 31st, in order to effectively determine what technology is out there, what it would cost, and apply the remainder of the grant that we have already received to purchasing the, the technology that we need, in order to gather together the data that we need, particularly in the villages, where there is an absence of data. And having it all in one place will enable us to identify redundancies and savings. So that's what this is about, and I just wanted you to know. That went out today. We're asking them to review it and, and to please consider the extension, and I'll have more to report when I get an answer from them. The second thing is, we have, in the packet, an intermunicipal agreement that has been, been prepared between the Town of Red Hook, the Village of Red Hook, and the Village of Tivoli, that is authoring us, authorizing us to enter into an intermunicipal agreement for the purposes of performing shared services with respect to the municipal activities that I have just described, the actual shared highway administration. So I would ask you to look at that. I don't want to read it word for word, we could, but it's been, I think, Harry, you are, you are familiar with it.
Mm-hmm.
I think I would like to ask us to adopt this, or approve it. We don't have to adopt it, but we can approve it, so that it can be used as a means to demonstrate some of the work that's been done. You've all attended these meetings, publicly, there are four, four public meetings that we've had, talking about the investigation of how to get to savings with the three participating highway departments. And this refers to some of what we learned in those meetings. So if we could approve that, I would like to move to approve the intermunicipal agreement as it exists here, recognizing that I haven't received approval from either of the villages, but expect that they will also approve it. So if I may, I'd like to move to approve the INA.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And then there is an, um, there is what is going to be required of us when the grant is fully prepared, the grant application is fully prepared, for shared services consolidation, which is due at Dutchess County Planning and Development on June 19th. The two villages are preparing that shared services grant. And I don't have the content of it in hand, but we know, again, from the meetings, what the intent of the grant that they are going for will be. So the second resolution I would ask us to approve is authorizing the submission of a joint town and village application to the 2015 Dutchess County Shared Services Grant Program to facilitate shared highway services. And I am assuming, and it says in here, whereas the Village of Red Hook proposes to serve as lead agency for joint application for this shared services grant program for the purpose of implementing shared highway administration services activity, now therefore be resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, that the Village of Red Hook is authorized to prepare and submit a joint application to the 2015 Dutchess County Shared Services Grant Program on behalf of the co-applicants Town of Red Hook, Village of Red Hook, and Village of Tivoli, for the purposes of cooperatively implementing shared highway administration and activities, as outlined in the former INA intermunicipal agreement. Number two, for purposes of the grant application, the authorized Village of Red Hook contact the Ed, Mayor Ed Lundell, and the authorized Village of Tivoli contact shall be Mayor Joel Griffith, and the authorized Town of Red Hook contact shall be the town supervisor Sue Crane. Supervisor Crane, or in her absence, Deputy Supervisor James Ross, is hereby authorized and directed to execute and submit such documents as they seem, as they shall deem necessary or advisable in support of the application for the 2015 Dutchess County Shared Services Grant Program to provide for implementation of shared highway administrative services. I'm not certain 215 is correct. I think it may be 216, or it may be 215 slash 16.
Right.
So we'll make sure that this is, the correct date is on there. I think it's 215-16, or it may even be 216. So having proposed the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And the last thing, again, has to do with grants. Each year, about this time, we get a letter, actually, it's not each year, it's every three years. Dutchess County requalifies as an urban county under the Community Development Block Grant Program, and this year will be for the fiscal years 2016 through 18. There were, there was a period of time where the City of Beacon did not join that consortium, but at the moment, they have 100% participation of all the communities within the County of Dutchess. We are notifying all municipalities that the existing cooperation agreements will automatically renew, unless your municipality elects in writing to be excluded from the urban county for the 216 through 218 qualification period. We have enclosed a ballot, which can be used to indicate your community's intention, and they need the ballot by June 26. It is important to remember that membership in the Community Development Block Grant Consortium also makes senior citizens in your community eligible for assistance from the Dutchess County Senior Citizen Property Rehabilitation Program, and developers eligible for the funding from the Home Investment Partnership Program, creating moderately priced housing. And the specific HUD language is attached. There's an informational session about Community Development Block Grant on Wednesday, June 17th, at 3:00 at Dutchess County Planning and Development in Poughkeepsie on High Street. So Ann Saylor is asking for a response, and that we will automatically re-up unless we decide not to. So I think I will just fill out the ballot, if, if I may, that our municipality intends to continue participation.
I agree.
Everybody agree?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
For sure.
Thank you. And then, I think that brings us to correspondence, the last item on the agenda. There are several things that I've received here, and there's no particular order. There is a letter from Ed Lundell, Mayor of the Village of Red Hook, to Teresa Burke. It has recently come to our attention that the town has been using water from the village hydrant for street cleaning. The Village of Red Hook is actively trying to measure all consumption and needs you to keep a log of the frequency and size of the tanks being filled, so that we can better manage our system. We also need you to ensure that you have protection against backflow when filling your tanks, if hoses are directly connected. We will be adding a meter at the hydrant, so we can measure the consumption. We would then consider an intermunicipal agreement to address use or purchase of the water, depending on how much the town actually uses. And that's from Ed Lundell, and I think he's following up with Teresa in that. I have heard no more. The Office for Aging, this is just to remind everyone that on Wednesday 24th, at Tivoli Memorial Park, the Office for Aging is offering the senior picnic for all seniors in the towns of Rhinebeck, Red Hook, Mylan, and the Village of Tivoli. So there will be dancing and-
Eating.
Eating, lots of good food, nice live music by Bob Martenson. It's, it's, if it's a lovely day, it's a lot of fun. And so seniors need to reserve for that by contacting the Office for Aging. Person's name is Pat Brown, 486-2545. We'll be hearing, well, maybe you've already heard about this, but this is the 23rd Annual New York State Relief Conference, July 16th through 18th, in Syracuse, at SUNY Syracuse. Now, who should attend? All of those who are interested in the field of urban and community forestry. And I bet you we know someone who will probably try to get to that. It's always a great conference. It's nice that they're holding it at different sites. I attended one at New Paul's, and Brenda, you've attended many, right?
Mm-hmm, it's a great, it is.
They really are a great conference. So Nancy will be excited about that. Harry, would you take the lead on this item?
Next time you do that?
Yeah, well, I just want you to, I just want you to, since you're the liaison to the Rec-
Yes, sure, sure.
Rec Commission.
All right.
Talk it up, Harry.
Yes, now, this is a document of all of the great things that are going on at the Rec, at the Rec Park. And we have, there's been considerable, considerable publicity. We've been signing people up for the various summer programs on Saturday mornings. There are a number of ways to contact John or the town to sign up for these, and it, and it's a, a list of everything that's happening over this summer. So if you're interested, I know the kids love the programs, get, get signed up and, and make them happy over the summer. But it's a-
The dates of the sign up?
The dates of the sign up are 6, June 6th and 13th, so it's this Saturday again.
This coming Saturday.
Yes, and a number of people, well over 100, signed up one of this past week.
Oh, that's great. Good news. Good, good, good. It, it usually grows as the season gets closer. Okay, thank you, Harry. And we were visited by our safety officer from Dutchess County, who is responsible for our safety in the workplace, and they did a safety survey throughout this, actually throughout the, all of the facilities of the town. And I have received a report regarding some of the items that had to be addressed. And they were tiny items, like the fire extinguishers needed to be checked and certified that they were inspected monthly. We had never been asked to do that before, so we were told that every one of our locations where there's a fire extinguisher, that has to be done monthly. And there were other small items that had attention to be paid, but nothing of any urgency. And I remember last year, when the person came around and went through this, they went out to the highway garage, and the woman said, "I've never seen anything like it." She said that, as I was going through the things that needed to change, they were changing them like that. She said it was done before I even left the building. So she was very impressed with how well-run the highway department was. She didn't tell me that about us, but maybe she was just, maybe she was too shy to say it about Town Hall.
Goes without saying.
It goes without saying, yes, I'm sure. We have a letter from New York State Department of Taxation and Finance, telling us that we have, along with other municipalities, and what their equalization rate is, it confirms that the Red Hook equalization rate is at 100%. So that's very good news, and we thank our assessor's office, the assessor and the deputy assessor for all the work, and the, and the assessment review board for all the work they do. That brings us to a letter of resignation, and it is from our assessor, Scott Hobson. I will read what he sent to us just this week. "It is with bitter emotion, bittersweet, sorry, bittersweet emotion, that I must present my letter of resignation as sole pointed assessor for the Town of Red Hook, effective July 3, 2015. It has been my sincere honor and privilege to serve the wonderful residents of this community for over four years. The experience has been both rewarding and challenging. The time has now come for me to look forward to exciting new challenges and rewards as the Director of Real Property Tax Services for Livingston County, New York. It is a rare opportunity to continue my professional development and life in public service to the public. Please know that all of my friends, please know that all of my friends throughout the community will be sorely missed, and I will wish only the very best in Red Hook's future to each. Sincerely, Scott Hobson." There is a second letter of resignation, and it is from Sheila Franklin, who says, "Dear Sue, this letter is to inform you that I will be resigning from my position as Secretary of the Senior Services Committee, effective June 15, 2015. I have served in this capacity for many years, and have enjoyed working for the committee and for the Town of Red Hook. However, I feel it is now time to fully retire. Of course, if there is any way in which I can help whoever takes my place, I would be more than happy to provide direction and any help which might be needed. Very truly, yours, Sheila Franklin." So, two people who have given to the Town of Red Hook, and we thank them for their service, and wish them all the best in the world. And the final thing that just arrived today, which is kind of a, kind of an honorary thing, and I think it's very nice and deserves recognition. The Boy Scouts annually give, of the Hudson Valley Council, annually give a distinguished citizen award reception, and this year, it is to go to the county executive, Mark Molinaro. So anyone who is interested in attending that, it is Wednesday, June 17th, and it is, oops, sorry, um, I don't know exactly where it was. Duchess Golf Club, sorry. It is at the Duchess Golf Club. So that is all I have for correspondence, unless someone else has some. Hearing none, is there any further public comment? Okay.
Back house.
Okay. What I would like to ask you to do now, if you will, is to go into executive session with me, for the purpose of discussing the hiring and firing of a particular individual. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we'll come out to close the evening. Thank you very much.